...of March 7th to order. We do have a call. Let's please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with open meeting law. Here on place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What's the wish to the council?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilman Lowdrigan to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose, same sign. Agenda is adopted. Approval of the minutes. Copy of the minutes for the special work session meeting of February 16, 2016, and the regular meeting of February 16, 2016 are enclosed. What's the wish to the council?
I'll make a motion on that, too.
Okay.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilman Boyham. Approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills. Approve checks 93599 through 93695 totaling $303,383.33. Mr. Goschek?
Those start on your page 70 of your PDF packet.
Page seven, PDF packet. Seventy. So it's seven and seven, right?
Yep.
Okay. Touchy screen here. Okay, turn to page seven. Any items to bring up? All the totals are on page 13, and I'll make a motion to approve thing of the bills for $303,383.33. Lot of threes.
I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Goschek, second by Councilman Hanson to approve the bills. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Awards, donations, presentations, proclamations. We got the presentation of Wellhead Protection Plan. Dwayne?
I am the Wellhead Protection Plan Manager for the city of Little Falls, and I'm here today to present to the council the updates for our wellhead protection during 2015. As all you know, our wellhead protection plan has three purposes. It's to manage potential sources of contamination, inform and educate the public about wellhead protection, and gather and assess data. Here are some of the things that we've done in 2015. The very first picture right up here, that would be the annular space on our well number seven. During the years of 1948 and 1972, the city's constructed seven wells, and during that time, it wasn't required to fill the annular space on these wells. So, well, as the years went by, we started noticing iron buildup on some of these wells, and this is what we're doing to try to solve that problem. The next picture there, this is how we get some of this information out to the public. We have a few different subjects that we try to hit in this Green Fair Folk Festival display there. And then the third one is a map of our DWISMA, our Drinking Water Supply Management area. And we team with the Soil and Water Conservation District on a nitrate clinic, and then these are the results. All the green ones are normal, low readings for nitrates. The red ones up there are sand points, and, you know, they're shallow wells and easily contaminated. But for the most part, everything looks really good for our city. Our wellhead protection plan for 2015 said that we need to accomplish six objectives. That is, the six objectives are household and industrial hazardous waste. We try to manage that so people aren't dumping them into our groundwater and contaminating what we have. Above and below ground storage tanks, wells, our inner wellhead management zone, public education and information, and then monitor and data collection. So for the first two objectives, well, actually for all six of them, before we start in, we usually get together with Natural Resource Conservation Service and Morrison County Soil and Water Conservation District. And we try to put together strategies on how we can accomplish what we have set in front of us for the year. And we educate and inform the public on our hazardous household waste and industrial waste. What we do is we just hand out pamphlets, talk to the public in, you know, every situation we can, like the Green Fair Folk Festival. We also do a water festival where we teach kids about the hazards and things like that. So that's what we've accomplished for the objectives one and two. Objective number three, the wells, that one takes, well, quite a bit more of our time. The city recently got four grants in 2015 totaling over $30,000. And what we use that money for is abandoning old wells. I know most of you have seen the big trucks hanging around here the last week. We just finished another well, so we have, we had a list of 12 of them, and we're down to one left to seal, so we're moving along pretty good with that. And then also, we installed a raw water line last year for future wells to be installed. We were looking at that well.
Fire hall.
Yeah, there's a spot we were looking at at the fire hall, and then also at the airport for a new well field. And someday down the line, if and when we need that, we'll be able to hook up right away with that raw water line instead of having to go through that process before we get a new well field hooked in. Let's see, objective number four, that is this one right here, that is our winter inner winner, inner wellhead management zone. What that is, is it's 200-foot radius around each of our wellheads, and that is the heart of everything. That's where we need to be the most focused on keeping contamination out. And over the years, we really haven't had any problem in that area. You know, we have to kind of, once a year, go over that area in red there to try to make sure that there's nothing in there that could cause damage to our well field such as contamination. The only real problems we have is once in a great while, we get that train coming through there going out to Ripley. But for the most part, and then the only other one is during those years, 1948 to 1972, we didn't have those annular spaces filled. So that's what we're kind of in the process of doing right now. Okay, so objective number five, public education and information. Right there is a picture of the water festival we do out at Camp Ripley. We have 700 kids come through there, so it's a kind of a most stressful day of my year. But it's a good event. I mean, a lot of kids just really enjoy it, and you get your ones that are a little more rambunctious than others, but for the most part, it's a pretty good deal there. And then on the last one, it's the monitoring. Like I said, we get together with the Soil and Water Conservation District, and we help with advertisement, and I really got to give it to Helen on this one, that she really does a lot of work with this. She gets all the samples and runs them. She plots it out, and then she also submits it to the Department of Health for us, so she really helps out a lot in that area. And then, let's see, for last part of 2015, we, well, actually, that was this year when we started our scoping meeting. At the end of 2017 here, that will be the end of our present wellhead protection plan. What we do is we meet with the Department of Health, and we start constructing the new plan. So as soon as the old one expires, the new one will just roll into it. So that's kind of the plan for 2016. We're gonna work on fulfilling our objectives like we did this year. We have probably six more to do for our last year. Seal abandoned well number nine. That is the last one on our list of 12. And then continue to work with the Minnesota Department of Health on constructing our new wellhead protection plan. So, are there any questions? Nothing?
Any questions for Dwayne?
Just a curiosity thing. Is asphalt a contaminant somewhat?
It is, but, you know, for the most part, you can run rain over that and do everything else, and water really doesn't pick up that petroleum that easy, and then make it through 20 feet, 25 feet of soil before it cleans it up. It's more of a solid than it is, you know, it doesn't really dissolve into water, so. Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do we need any actions on that?
We do.
We do?
To accept the presentation and then to name Dwayne as the Wellhead Protection Manager. Originally, it was Jerry was the Wellhead Protection Manager. Just for formality, we'll have, if the council approves it, we'll have Dwayne listed as the manager for it.
Can I get said motion?
I'll make a motion to accept this and recommend Dwayne to be Wellhead Protection Manager.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Goschek, second by Councilman Boyham. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Dwayne. Congratulations on your new title. You're formally new title. Onto consent agenda. Advertising bench site, JMR II Investments, approve. Community Services Advisory Board Minutes, December 2015, receive. Housing and Redevelopment Authority Minutes, February 2016, receive. Library Board Minutes, November 2015, receive. Morrison County Prosecution Report, January 2016, receive. Park, Rec, and Tree Board Minutes, February 2016, receive. Pay Equity Compliance Notification, receive. What's the wish to the council on the consent agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve, but I'd also like to discuss number A.
We can have discussion if you want to approve with it, or if you want to pull it and approve the rest and come back.
How about I pull it and then approve the rest and come back?
Okay. Motion to approve, minus A. Have a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Goschek, second by Councilman Hanson to approve the consent agenda with pulling item A for further discussion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Now, what happens to?
Advertising bench site, JMR II Investments. Do I have a motion to approve that one, and then we can go into discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Item A from the consent agenda.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilman Lowdrigan to approve A. Discussion?
My discussion is, you know, at our first meeting tonight, there was some discussion about freedom of speech issues that might be violated if we were to approve this, and I just want to, instead of just going forward and approving it, might run into a little trouble here, I'd like Tony's recommendation, and maybe Mr. Wavigo to come forward if he had any concerns with that. I think the discussion was brought up about how some of Mr. Wavigo's contract was in violation of the new freedom of speech laws.
So, I think this here, though, isn't nothing to do with this contract. This is where either we're gonna approve a bench or not approve a bench, so I think if we want to discuss the contract, it should be brought up.
It could be brought up at a later time, certainly.
Right.
Okay.
But if we want to review the contract with, either we give them another bench or we don't, I think is what we're asking for here, not to renew all the contract.
Well, now, I don't have the contract, but isn't it literally so you can put a stop to having a bench with the F-word on it or something like that? I mean, I think that's a...
You know, I had a visit with Mr. Wavigo this morning. I also have concerns with this. Remember, a couple of years ago, we were considering getting out of the bench business as a city. I think Dan, our former interim administrator, had mentioned that Brainerd had gotten out of it. I personally view this as an unnecessary governmental intrusion on a small business. A private business can put up a bench, and if they don't like what's on it, they don't have to do it. You know, it's not a public governmental agency, and it's something that I am not opposed to this. I told Jeff that I believe this is a fine request. It's okay. The location is good, and he's had it approved since last fall with those involved. But it's a case where I'm not certain that the city should be in the bench business. We've got streets, water, sewer, all kinds of fun things like that. Why are we contending with the approval of the location of a bench? So it's something that I think right now, under the circumstances, I believe we should approve it. But it's a case where I think that we can look very specifically at that franchise idea and see if it's even appropriate to what we as a city want to do.
So these benches, are they in the right of way, or are they out of the right of way? Greg, do we not?
They're in the right of way.
They're all in the city right of way?
But they're on private property.
Well, no, if they're in the right of way, it's not private property.
If it's back away from the right of way.
Well, they're all in the right of way, so the right of way means it's not in private property, it's in public property.
Correct.
It is in the right of way. It's no different than a sidewalk in the right of way, so it's on public property. Correct?
This, if you look at, on the PDF document number 79, which is page 16 reference, you can see where the photo of it is. It is, I'm not certain if that is in the right of way. It certainly is not in the right of way on the First Street side. I'm not entirely certain if it would be on the Fourth Avenue side. In the discussion with this plan, I don't think the intent was to put it in the right of way. It was to keep it on the private property of the Initiative Foundation where it was going to be.
So then wouldn't it be an off-site?
It would be.
Off-premise sign?
Which?
Which we can have now.
Which, it's up to Initiative, so why are we even entertaining if it's not on?
It's not a fair, really.
Don't concern us, really. That's my point.
If you assign permit for the Initiative, I want to pull. Correct? On our new, if they want to sign on their corner of their lot?
It just gets a little sticky if we're gonna start doing it that way. I mean, then you're almost looking at, if we aren't gonna have him come and get approval as part of the franchise, do we then go to pulling, you know, when the contract terminates pulling it and telling Mr. Wavigo, you can go contract with private property owners as long as you set it outside the right of way, you can contract with them and do your benches that way?
Right.
I think it gets a little bit sticky. Does he have to? You know, we'd have to look at that in more detail if we're gonna start doing that, but you can't have off-premise signage, no, there's no doubt about it.
It'd be no different to me, putting one on the corner of my lot, as far as I'm concerned, I can put on whatever I want as long as it meets my signage requirement.
The only difference is he has a franchise agreement with the city.
Yeah, and the franchise is allowing him to put it in the right of way.
Right.
All right, so if it's not in the right of way, is there really, we can't, can we tell him no if he wants to put it on private property?
I'd want to look at that more closely. I'd want to look at it more closely, specifically the contract that we have. I'd want to look at that more closely.
So what would be your advice on this one? To approve it, or to not approve it? I mean, it's not on public property?
I don't think there's harm in approving it. He's got the franchise, and I don't think there's harm in approving it.
But is that putting some obligation on the Initiative Foundation that let them put it on their property if we approve it? So what legality does that give us if we approve it there?
The property owner has to allow it.
In this circumstance, they have. They have already allowed it, so.
But I think the question we're having here is if it's on the right of way, do we need their permission?
If it's on the right of way, don't we always have it regardless?
No, if it's on the right of way.
Right, if it's on the right of way.
If it's on the right of way, they don't, they could have said no, and we could still be considering this.
Correct.
I believe, doesn't the ordinance say that if they have to have approval of the property owner, that it abuts?
That's what I'm looking for. I thought there was something to that effect.
That was my understanding.
Do you have to have the approval of the property owners?
Yes.
Who's ever property owner right of way it's in?
Regardless if it's on the right of way or it's on private property. And I don't, you know, I don't know, aside from the ones that are real close, like KFC is real close to the curb up there, or just on the other side of the sidewalk, I should say. I don't know how far that, I don't know where the right of way is or where that ends, so.
The only thing I see in this is if it's in the right of way, it doesn't count against the property owner's signage area.
Well, none of them do, right?
Well, there's limits to how much signage they can have on their property, and they can have off-premise sign allowed, but it goes against the number of area, right?
Yeah, but do your existing ones, or were they all grandfathered in, meaning they weren't part of their signage before, because that would have been a billboard, off-premise sign, so now we allow it, now it counts towards their signage?
Still part of their, still part of their signage, if it's on their property.
But it wasn't before, but now it is. How does that work? Because it was a billboard before.
Yes, it's something we have to discuss at the planning commission or something. Something we need to discuss. But there would be no harm with us approving if they could put a bench there.
Yeah, I'm looking at this a little more closely, and the, I guess my concern was primarily with the First Street right of way. I wasn't looking at it in terms of the Fourth Avenue right of way. The Fourth Avenue right of way actually does, is, it's quite wide, so it very likely could be in the right of way in that area.
Isn't that avenue usually 20-foot, 15, 20-foot usually from back of curb?
In that area, I believe it's 40 feet from the center.
From the center?
Yep.
So you took a good 15-foot of green space.
Yeah. Yeah, he would, yeah, it would, it would have to be, yep.
Don't get me wrong, I have no problem with it either way, it's just if, why are we proving something if we don't need to?
Well, and it, again, our ordinance is somewhat contradictory. It talks about the city approving it if it's in the right of way and with private property as negotiated with the private property owner, but then it talks about prior to placement, we approve the material, we, you know, we have all these other approvals with it, so it still seems to kick back to us.
Right.
We can look at cleaning that up, or, as Councilmember Boyham stated, maybe you don't want to do it anymore because now we have off-site.
Signage?
Signage where Mr. Wavigo could go and contract with those individuals directly. Obviously, then he's not gonna be able to put it in the right of way, and that'll affect the viability of the advertising, but that's up to you. At this point, with this particular bench, given what we're seeing here, given we generally approve construction and materials, things like that, I think the city should decide whether it wants to approve or not.
So did we or did we not, when we went through all the rigmarole here the last few years, go through this contract with our bench ordinance?
The ordinance, yes. The ordinance, yes. For constitutional track, this is more of a right of way versus...
Right, but our concerns earlier with our fellow constituent.
I think the point there was whether we're statutorily liable for somebody else's contract language in terms of restrictions to freedom of speech.
And those things, you know, that's a separate issue. Obviously, that wasn't something I looked at looking at were approving a bench, so I can certainly check on that. I can give a shout down to Paul, who's working with us right actively anyways. So we can certainly check into that, and that may have some binding on or...
If we want to continue.
On what you want to do in the future, too, so I can certainly do that.
Mr. Wavigo, would it affect you much if we put this off until next meeting?
When is next meeting?
That'd be...
Twenty-first. Twenty-first.
No, I've been waiting since October, so.
Okay, yeah, this way we can clear up a few things and kind of know a little bit more of what we're voting on here and what liabilities we have, so.
Well, we'd have no more liabilities approving this one than we, any of the 20-some or 30-some we have approved out there already. We're tied, we're tied if we got one or if we got 21, so it's not a new thing out of the...
I'm required to carry insurance on this.
Right.
Right.
You know, I carried the liability insurance, and I think that that was part of the initial contract with the city is that, and that was a stipulation that I have to cover, because in some cases I'm on personal property, in some cases I'm on the city's right of way. And I have no way of knowing, unless I went and specifically find out what is the right of way. Quite frankly, the benches that are close to the corner south are more popular than the ones that are in the middle, so if you eliminate the way you're doing it now and just say, okay, I can put a bench anywhere I want as long as I have their permission, but I gotta stay out of the front right of way, and then, you know, it doesn't really do any good from a business standpoint.
Correct.
Because if they end up in the middle of the street or back so far that people can't use them, you know, then, you know, it doesn't really do any good.
Well, as you said, why would you put a bench in the middle of private property? Then you got people trespassing on your property to use the bench. So, unless you're gonna put it in your gnome garden. My only...
From First Street back, when I get, you know, going to the east, once I get on the east side of the sidewalk there, is that considered private property then, or is there some...
The east, the east side of First Street is outside of the right of way. Or, I mean, outside of the, east side of the sidewalk is outside of the right of way.
But that's not always the case.
Not always the case, but in this circumstance, it is. It was, I apologize, yes, my focus was primarily from First Street because that's the way the bench was facing. I didn't take into consideration Fourth Avenue, and the Fourth Avenue right of way is 65-foot right of way, so it does extend quite a ways out. So you get 32 and a half feet from the center line, and that's, that gets quite a ways into that green space.
And with the photo, I know it's not the best, because I'm really getting square in the sidewalk, it's not what we're gonna do it, but the reason for the photo from Fourth Avenue was to show that there was no obstruction from the car going up to the stop sign. That was the main reason for, you know, trying to put the bench, and that picture was taken from a lower vehicle. In the past, it had been some questions about whether it was obstructing view or...
The streets that are 80.
That's why, that's why I provided, and hopefully helped.
I hope I'm not coming because I'm a little gun-shy from an episode that happened a little while back here, and I realize we changed that because back then, you know, if memory serves me right, it was because the council had control of what could be said on there.
Right.
But on this instance, we're not controlling anything. It's all through the company Mr. Wavigo represents, so, and I heard some talk earlier, I just wasn't quite clear what the point was being made there, and because there is a little bit change in the way the federal government's looking at signage and stuff, that was my only concern, is that we're not liable in any way as a city as far as giving an okay there, because I sure wouldn't want to go back to court over some bench again.
There are already how many benches out? So this approval? There are already how many benches out, so this approval, that's going to trigger it? It could be triggered five benches. It could have been triggered, you know, two benches back or whenever this came through.
The only last one. The only difference I see is because the federal government just came out with this...
That's what I mean, triggered back to whenever, whenever that came through. That just coming through could have triggered it. I don't see this one bench. We have benches all over the place through this franchise. I don't see us in any different position with this bench. Looking at it now, you know, as a fresh issue for the whole overlying issue of the benches, how our ordinance reads, how his contract reads, we can do that. But this one extra bench, I don't see affecting...
I think the federal government's going to give us a little leadway or time to bring some of this stuff into compliance. It's just not like they sprung it on us and we had 24 hours to get it right. Because no government, city government, can work that quick.
No, you'll be held to it. There's no doubt about it. I'm not, we already have benches all over the place, so I'm not seeing one extra bench being an issue.
I find it, if it's, if it's out of compliance, everything's out of compliance. If, you know...
Right.
But we're not approving at this time any content on the sign.
No.
So it's the question of us having a franchise agreement and his contract with, you know, vendors saying that this is the content that you can put on there. I'm controlling it because I'm the one providing the bench. If by us having that franchise agreement and him controlling the content, if there's enough separation there in the eyes of the law, saying, "Yeah, the city, you're controlling the content and infringing upon the freedom of speech." If he's doing it as a commercial venture, I think that changes, but I don't know. And that would be something I would ask, certainly ask that question. However, we're not talking about content here, so we're not... If it's, if we're out of compliance on that, we're out of compliance on all of them. And they're all, and then likely they would all have to go, and this franchise agreement would go. But in terms of this specific bench right here, right now, what we're talking about approving, I don't think has any constitutional impact.
Well, I got a motion and a second on the table to approve. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apropos, same sign. Motion carries. Welling's Wellhead Protection Plan, Part One, Bar Engineering. Greg?
Good evening. We sent out a request for proposals to four firms for our wellhead protection update, Part One. The Part One of the wellhead protection is essentially the model that you base all of your, your plan off of. So what you're going to do to protect it really starts off with this first part, which is the modeling, to see how the water travels underground to the wells that we have. We sent out the proposal to four firms. We received three of them back. Myself and Dwayne scored the three proposals. The firm with the highest scoring is Bar Engineering. We looked at a number of things for, with the three firms in terms of scoring them, and those were project understanding, the work plan, the cost detail, company qualifications, and then the qualifications of the staff that was actually being assigned to the project. And based off of all of that, Bar Engineering had the highest total. So tonight, we are recommending Bar Engineering for the, for the projects to do our Part One of our wellhead protection.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Lildgren, second by Councilman Hanson to award Bar Engineering Wellhead Protection Plan, Part Number One. Is this something that can be split up as our parts go on or pretty much we give the first one, the whole rest is going to follow with them?
Nope. I've seen in the past where Part One is to one firm and Part Two is to another one. So this is not necessarily locked in from here on out.
Do I say they're the highest point score but also the high dollar amount, so...
That's correct. They were the highest point score but also the highest dollar amount. I'll say that they were the only firm that reached out to the Department of Health to see if there's any way to help offset that cost. And then when they did talk with the Department of Health and, you know, gave them some reasoning as to why there should be funds available for it, the Department of Health did say that there would be grant opportunities for, to help pay for some of this. We've got to, as you'll see later on in your agenda here, approve that grant application as well. But they were the only ones that reached out for them. Typically, the Part One doesn't have any grant funds available for it, but they were able to discuss it and work with the Department of Health to say yes, that there should be some funds available for this one.
Okay. I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apropos, same sign. Motion carries. Nothing on old business, on the new business, day of caring participation, consider. Greg?
Yeah, as we do every year, I think for the last five years, this will be the sixth year that we're, that the city of Little Falls is participating in the Day of Caring. We're looking for the council's approval to continue that coordination and workmanship with the school district. Typically, our involvement includes purchasing of the leaf and lawn bags, staff time to pick up the brush that can't necessarily go into the garbage haulers where they pick up the leaves. We'll pay for the garbage haulers to pick up those leaves and then work with, in the engineering department, the coordination in terms of laying out where all the teams from the school go. So, you know, today we'd be looking for approval from the council to continue that effort with the school, with the Day of Caring. You know, last year, we helped, I think it was 160 homeowners within the city of Little Falls, and that's something that we'd like to continue to move forward with.
What's the wish of the council?
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion by Councilman Boyham, second by Councilman Hanson to approve the Day of Caring participation. Further discussion?
Yeah, I think this is perhaps the finest community activity that I've ever come across.
A lot of good comments out in the community from it, so...
It's a very good program.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apropos, same sign. Motion carries. Minister of Department of Health, Wellhead Protection Grant authorized. Greg?
Yep, like I had indicated a little bit earlier, we would like to work with Bar to complete the grant application for $10,000 to help offset the cost for the Wellhead Protection Plan. Tonight, we would look for your approval to move forward with that grant application and then further authorize John to execute that once and if we receive those grant funds.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to apply for the Wellhead Protection Grant.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilman Lildgren to authorize grant application. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apropos, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance number 84, six series, amend city chapter code for municipal and public utilities. Need a motion to introduce that one tonight. Laurie or John, you have anything other than what we had in the planning one?
No, we'll just have the, this and the summary publication both introduced this evening, so...
Do I have a motion to introduce?
I'll introduce it.
Ordinance 84, introduced by Councilman Gushak. Ordinance number 84A, six series, summary publication. Get an introduction there too?
I'll make a motion to introduce 84A.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson to introduce Ordinance 84A. Parking lot improvements, former Boys and Girls Club, consider. John?
You know, as we discussed in the work session, there's, this is kind of revising a plan back in 2008 and '09 with Morrison County acquiring the Boys and, former Funeral Home slash Boys and Girls Club site. They've currently got the site removed of hazardous materials, and the building has been cleared. They're asking us to participate by paying for the construction of the lot. We've done some design options. We have one that we prefer. It has 41 slot parking spots available. We've, they've made some agreements to at least designate some of those spots to be utilized for the library to park. We've built a walkway between the two so that they would be connected. And that we, the cost of constructing that lot is about 25% of the overall cost of the project as a whole. They've invested a lot in the acquisition and clearing of the site, and we would be coming in and kind of finishing off. Moving forward, the city would be responsible for just the snow removal and ice and debris from the property. 25% of the lighting costs for the streetlights to be put up there. And then the county would be responsible for all of the striping, pot-all removal, you know, other things, construction-wise, maintenance on the lot moving forward. Formerly, this county would own the whole parking lot, as they currently do own that whole parcel, so... They do, they do want to maintain the opportunity to put up a structure. At this time, you know, the thought process would be something more for storage, not a full building to, you know, occupy the whole lot and remove the parking as a whole. As we've discussed, they are open to putting in some sort of time restrictions and to, you know, maintaining it as a parking lot before putting any other structure on there to ensure that it's, if it is used, that it does kind of meet, help them meet the purpose of reducing their parking problems and helping us with adding some parking for the library that we share, so...
Who would plow it? Would that be the city?
The city, yeah.
What's the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table this item until the next scheduled meeting. I'm against it, but we have three colleagues absent today. And I didn't think Mr. Boyham had, didn't seem very eager for this, and we're both board one. So I want the rest of the city's representatives to have a say as well.
So it's table to next, for two weeks, the next meeting?
You need a second.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, second by Councilman Gushak to table. We don't need a vote though, correct?
No.
Request for funds, Outdoor Report, Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau?
Yeah, the, as mentioned at the last meeting, Chris Von Berg presented to us in the work session an opportunity to take part in a show called The Outdoor Report. And she explained some of their, the person that does the production and its impact and the opportunity for them to feature Little Falls for an outdoor program. What they're requesting is access to funds that we, we as a city, collect and hold on behalf of the Conventioners and Visitors Bureau. These are funds that come from our hotels, tax, and restaurant, too. So currently, within that agreement, we, I think we fund the first $125,000 for them, and then any additional revenue that we collect on top of that is split 50% for us and 50% for the Conventioners and Visitors Bureau. This item is something that would come out of those funds that we've collected and not retained, not needed to retain on behalf of the administration of those dollars. So we do have some excess funds available for them, and it's something that their board has approved to move forward with, so... That said, you know, I don't have any opposition to them utilizing their funds as their board has approved, so...
What's the wish of the council on the request?
Make a motion to honor that request.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushak, second by Councilman Lildgren to approve the request from the Little Falls Visitors and Convention Bureau. Any further discussion?
In a sense, these are their funds then to begin with.
Correct. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apropos, same sign. Motion carries. Request for proposals, website, consider. John?
Yep, as we've discussed and now with the split of that vacant land resources, we're coming forward with you a draft of a request for proposal to redesign our city website, actually redesign or replace our city website, depending on what sort of feedback we get. With help from our intern, we did also borrow from another community's request for proposal, but it did detail some, a lot of the items that we're looking for and a lot of the details that we want to ensure are formally addressed in that sort of proposal. So we're looking to get approval to introduce this and kind of work off the timeline that's included on PDF 155, page 92 of the packet, getting this advertised, and then possibly having some sort of display and recommendations coming, you know, in May and June of this year.
What's the wish of the council for the request for proposal?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Councilman Lildgren.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hanson to request for proposals. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apropos, same sign. Motion carries. Anyone got any reports? Anything from staff?
Between now and the next city council meeting, there is a Legislative Action Day sponsored by the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities on March 16th. I will be going to St. Paul, attending that on the city's behalf, so...
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. 8:31, we'll adjourn.